No, no, we could do that today.
We will not have any more specific questions.
Yeah. Well, what we're doing, we're going to have that conversation with that legislator later for the first 20 minutes that we were trying to schedule. So, yeah, because I figure this and that other budget piece, we are going to take care of with the full board. Anyway, go.
My meeting isn't until 6:00.
Oh, good.
Okay. I call to order the May 16, 2018 regular business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Wagner, please call the row.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
President Jones?
Here. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, May 7, 2018, and the business meeting, May 7, 2018.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Today's presentation, Superintendent Mitchell?
Today's presentation is going to be provided by our treasurer, so I'm going to turn it over to her for the intro and the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, board members.
Morning. Good morning.
... and all members of the public. Welcome, and it's my distinct pleasure to introduce a five-year forecast. But so, just for the public's understanding, it is required by the Department of Education that every school treasurer, district treasurer files a general fund cash forecast twice a year in October and May. We have to show three years of actual data by audit code and then five years of actual data. And the purpose of this is so that the public and government of our education can monitor our solvency, and then we use it to ensure revenue security. So before I go into the next slide, introduce you to the forecast itself, and go over the big pictures, because we already got some data. So the first section of pot are all revenue sources, and then the expenditure sources, and then it's going to do is the impact on the cash balance. So if you'll take note on renewable levies that are within that time frame, if you do not show up at the revenue source, it shows up at the very bottom of the cash section. So they look like that is dropping significantly in those later years, and that's just a lot that you may consider. So, big picture first, the good news is that we're going to end this year this forecast we anticipated in October, and for two major reasons. One being the phenomena of prepaying property taxes is typically higher than typically experienced.
Because of the tax, anticipated tax budget statements. That was a little strange, thank you. And so what we've done is we take that, the money that we typically, that we normally would collect in August, we got in January, February timeframe, so we took it out to next year's revenue sources. I felt like it's too loud. Second reason why we're going to end up with more cash is because of phenomenon in the forecast where we're estimating general fund salaries. We anticipated, the forecast model takes last year's salaries and increases it for step increases and COLA increases, and then any expansion activities that we planned for. And because we were expanding preschool expansion classrooms and increased enrollment, we added those anticipated salaries without realizing that some of the other funding sources would pay for those things, so we ended up over forecasting the salaries. Brittany and I are going to work on improving that forecast for October. So we are still in a good cash position for the next several years. Also want to remind the board that the BIANIA budget, we'll get a new BIANIA budget in '20, and so those last three years could change dramatically based on new funding formulas from the state. So the assumptions that are in this forecast is that you have your three years of actual data, fiscal year '18 is our year-to-date data through April, and then we estimate the last two months. Brittany's done an incredible amount of work on this for us, and she's awesome. And so there's a reminder of the change in the state BIANIA budget, and then the change in the transportation reimbursements that are continuing to go down. There is a 2% COLA in 2018. If you recall, our collective bargaining agreements has a re-opener in that third year, so we have nothing in there for the forecast. And then we typically follow inflation rates to predict future years' expenses under 5% increase over medical utilities and capital spending. Purchase service is typically a 3%. Some areas are higher, some are lower within that purchase service, and then supplies and materials are typically around 2%. In this particular forecast, we're working on transportation increases. The contracts that we have with our vendors already anticipate a 3% increase each year, but the foster play students that are growing are driving some of our costs up. So we spent around 2.4 million transporting foster students, play students, this year that we did not last year. That is also driving an increase in tuition. An analysis that was provided by our EMIS team shows that the number of foster play students has grown since '15 by 27%. They attribute that to the drug addiction phenomenon that's growing. So here's a picture of our general fund revenues. The green slices of the pie chart are our local sources of funds, the majority being property taxes based on our levies. And then the purple are the state foundation formula, and then their reimbursement on the TPP. So our local share represents 60%, which is really higher than most other districts. Most of their districts get their percent from the state, the higher percent from the state, so we're flip-flopped. Our local property taxes pay more than other entities. Here's the data behind that pie chart, and like I said before, that first line is our property tax collection, and so we anticipated 275 million in October. We've actually going to forecast collecting 285 million. 4 million of that is what we typically, taxpayers prepay their annual taxes, but there was a new phenomena, the $6 million increase to that based on the tax. The county auditor's office is explaining to us that they had a huge increase because of the anticipation of the new tax laws. So property, the tangible property tax for public utilities has gone up because of the reevaluation. That's, that property is not subject to the reduction factor in the House Bill 920. State increases, our unrestricted state, even though our enrollment's going up, you can see that we are a little bit under where we projected to be, and it's because we're on the cap. This district, we keep flipping between the formula and the cap, and so the cap means that we can only grow 5% of the previous year's revenues. 5% now, it used to be 7.5%. But you can see our restricted, which is our economic disadvantage and crew tech funding, has actually gone up. The other revenue sources, this represents our non-property tax, non-state revenue. It's our pilot payments, CRA, TIF payments, tuition that we collect. It looks like it's down, because if you recall, last year we collected the $5 million TIF payment from the city in June instead of July, and so this year it looks down, but last year's was up. And so next year, we'll go back to normal. So we didn't lose money. The advances in are, at the end of each fiscal year, we have to, the general fund has to advance all the federal funds and state funds that we are in our reimbursement. So we spend the money, we ask for reimbursement. At the end of the year, we can't show a fund in a deficit situation, so the general fund temporarily advances that money to those funds to keep them at zero balance, and then that gets returned the very next month. So you see the advances in, you'll see on the expense side in a corresponding advance out. Other funding sources represents our E-Rate reimbursement and Medicaid reimbursements. The Medicaid is really hard to predict because it's so, it's several years behind, and so we try to average it out based on history. Sometimes we're higher, sometimes we're a bit lower. So here's the corresponding pie chart on the expense side of the House. You can see that our wages and benefits represent 25% of that spend. Two reasons that comparatively to other districts is that we outsource our transportation, so we don't, those are purchase services rather than salary, the bus drivers, where most districts own their own buses and they pay their drivers. And then the phenomena of the school-wide pool, where we take general fund monies and we put it into a separate fund, so that school board, sorry, school principals can only manage one fund, and I'll have a graph that shows that in explanation a little bit later. There's two other transfers that we do for Fund 34, which is our building maintenance fund, is 3.5, represents a half a mil, $3.4 million, and then our debt. So we transfer about $13 million a year into our debt service fund to pay all of our liabilities. So here's the data that is behind that pie chart, and here where you can see on personnel services, person, they call it personal services, that's the salary lines. It's under projection, and that's because of that phenomenon where we anticipated the expansion of command of the general fund, and it's coming from other sources, so that's good. The employee retirement benefits is just a percentage of salary, driven off of how we set salaries, so those will be down as well. The purchase service line is $8 million higher than we forecasted in October for the two, those transportation and tuition reasons that were driving us up, and then the rest of them are fairly immaterial changes. So if you recall from the revenue slide, our income is up, our expenses are down, and so that's why we ended up with more cash. So here's the impact. Excuse me. Because of our money that we transfer into those other funds is less than we'd anticipated, we're, there's $6 million staying in the general fund that we thought we would be transferring out. Most of that is related to that salary out in the schools. We have $21 million higher than we anticipated on revenues over expenditures, so that's growing our cash balance for the end of the year. So originally, we intended 67 million, we're going to, we think we're going to end with 87 million, so that helps us stay more solvent longer in the future. Does that make sense?
It does.
So here's a pie chart of a purchase service, because it's a pretty broad general term, it's hard to understand, but we, our communities, all of our tuition payments come out of this, and that represents 58%, I think. Transportation's at 21% of that pot, utilities, all of our professional, like our technology professional contracts are part of professional services. You see the pie chart of Cincinnati Preschool Promise, that represents the payment that we pay to United Way, so that they pay their tuition and quality improvement monies. And then we pay a portion of rentals and lease payments. So our operating leases for technology and copiers and any other places that we would Similar pie chart for the supplies and materials. As you can see, 34%, 44% actually goes into the classroom, either through instructional supplies, instructional software or textbooks and library books. 14% being building maintenance and supplies, the toilet paper, paper towels type of things, fuel for our vehicles, and then general supplies represents just general office supplies, computer supplies and stuff like that. So here's a breakdown of the transfer that I spoke of. So in October, we anticipated having to transfer $200 million from the general fund into three funds. The first one being the school-wide pool, second one being the debt, and the third one being the maintenance fund, Fund 34. This is how the pool is defined. So 180 million comes to the general fund, and the breakdown by which they spend that money. So most of it, 97% of it is spent on salaries, so teacher salaries, principal salaries, the paraprofessionals, and then 8 million comes from Title I and less than a million comes from Title II-A. So general fund is 95% of that pool, and the benefit of that, let me just skip ahead real quick. Here's a chart that shows you the benefit of the pool. So the monies come from each one, Title I, general fund, and Title II-A, so the principal only has to manage one budget instead of three. That one budget is supposed to support their needs assessment, academic needs assessment, so if they have a weakness in third grade math, then they should put their funding sources towards third grade math. The beauty of it, they only have to manage one budget, and then when we spend it, we charge back those funds according to the proportion that it was, went in. So general fund would charge back 95%, Title I would be 4%. There's a picture of what it looks like. You can see that the majority of that spend goes towards salary and benefits, as I explained before, with teachers and instructional staff. So one of the difficulty that we have in explaining our five-year forecast spend is when we throw all that big, $880 million in a transfer, it's hard to see how we're really spending our money. So I've restated it as if it were spent holistically. So the general fund column, the 372 million will tie to those expenditure lines in the forecast, and then the transfer of the school-wide pool is that graph where I show you how the school-wide pool was spent. So then I combine it. So instead of spending, in years past, we would have spent $553 million in expenses. This shows you that the majority of that spend is in salaries and benefits and then purchase services, which is, the majority of that spend is tuition and transportation. Does that make sense? Some of the longer-term board members will, it'll be more reflective in the way we used to do the forecasting. So here's a really ugly chart. I don't know why my white background didn't pop up, so you can't read those rules, but it's just a representative of that, the dollars that are in front of you on that slide. So in summary, in terms of what does the future look like, this graph shows you the revenue. I'm a big-picture kind of person, so the bottom green portion of that bar chart is the state foundation formula funding. As you can see, it stays relatively flat. And the light green portion is our property taxes, local property taxes, that are fixed-rate, the inside millage funds. And then I'm showing you, and the pink, blue, and purple are the three fixed-sum levies. So we just passed a levy in 2017, the 48 million was another fixed-sum levy, and then we have another one that's coming up for renewal in 2019? Yeah, 2019. Comparatively speaking, this is the forecast and the expenditures. And as you can see, the slope, the slope is much more dramatic than the revenues, and so what we have to do, year to year, is to make sure that we're not inflating those future years out. When you, when you use inflation percents, it tends to escalate on you, and so we focus on the next two years to make sure that we're reasonable, and the last three years is kind of a guide to think about. So if you have an anomaly in one year, and then you increase it by 5% because of inflation, it thinks that anomaly is going to keep going up or down or whatever, so we have to, it's hard to predict that four years out. This graph shows you, I want to focus on the red line at the top, which is a revenue line that assumes our renewals will pass, and because we've had such a great passage rate and great support from our public, it's a safe assumption. The bottom line shows you the impact, or I'm sorry, the green line shows you the expenditures, and so what we have to do as an administration is to maintain, we close that gap between the red line and the green line, as we do our budgeting and our spending. The bottom two lines represent cash with and without the renewal, so if we don't pass renewal, you can see the bottom line drops a little bit deeper than anticipated. So in the past, there's been comment about how big our cash balance is, and so there's a requirement by the Department of Education, where they look to see how solvent you are in the current year and the year forward, and they look to see if your, your cash is at least 2% of your prior year revenues. And so in calculating our forecast, we're good in '18, we're good in '19, we're pretty close in '20, we have some work to do, but that will keep ODE from considering us in fiscal caution or monitoring. It's also wise to try to keep at least 60 days of cash on hand to make sure you pay salaries, in case something goes wrong, and so that $12 million in cash would be, get us pretty close. And I just wanted to remind the board and the public of our commitment to financial transparency. Brittany does a lot of work on OpenGov, and we've seen more traffic on our web pages, and so we're excited about that. And so she actually has a link on there, if you have questions or you have a recommendation on what you'd like to see that's not up there, she's, she'll be happy to put that up there. So with that, I'll stop for questions.
Do board members have questions and comments?
Pleasure.
Mr. Messer?
Thank you for always providing a very thorough and educational report. You know, the one thing, as a new board member and as a taxpayer, like the rest of us, I'm always struck by that, that reality that our formula is almost flopped, state contribution versus local contribution, and I don't know that the general public understands that. What is the process for having that evaluated? That is a state level. Is it a, through the state legislature? The formula that is then utilized to calculate that, how is that done?
So, that's a great question. So it's part of the BIANIA budget, and the formula for calculating district wealth has become more complex over the last three or four formulas, but it's a measure of how we compare to the average state in terms of property wealth and income wealth, and they come up with this formula. So we're about 47% of our state share, so when you, when they run the funding formula with all your students and the conditions of your students, you get waiting for students with different disabilities and waitings for English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, they'll reduce those line items to 47%, saying that you are wealthy districts, you can afford to raise funds from your local sources, and so the, our local taxpayers bear a greater burden. And we have the lowest state share of all the urbans, and pretty significantly. Like if you compare us to Cleveland, Cleveland's up in the 70s by state funding, because they have low property wealth. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so the statewide formula is determined ultimately by whom?
The Ohio Department of Education in conjunction with the governor.
Okay.
State superintendent and legislative, House bills and Senate bills that get passed that has an impact on those funding requirements.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the report. Wanted to ask, which is the fiscal year we've just finished, or we're in the process of finishing?
Fiscal year '18. June 30 of '18 is the end of our fiscal year.
Right. So we're looking really at '19 for a projection that impacts the superintendent's and district's budget?
Correct, and typically, we're a little bit backwards on that process right now. Typically, the budget's further along in the process in order to inform the forecast. This year, we're kind of in reverse order for a variety of circumstances, so what we'll do is monitor the budget, and we use the forecast to set the budget target in total. The line, individual line items and subjects, so to speak, we'll do some comparative analysis and work to improve that, to make sure that we're not under-budgeting certain areas or over-budgeting certain areas.
So somewhere in the next couple of months, the '18 will be actual?
Correct, and so the October forecast will have '18 actual, and '19 will become the budget.
Right.
And then we'll forecast for, future out.
And so even though we're not quite there yet, and we have still work to do on the budget, how much money are we anticipating coming in in '19 versus how much money we are spending in '19?
So if you look at the, the column in fiscal year 2019, we're anticipating $587 million in revenues. You see that line? It's line 2.08.
2, 0, 8, 0?
Yeah, yeah. And so the forecast is anticipating 622, but the advances don't really count in that, so we subtract that out, so about 610 million, in order to produce that $100 million cash balance.
So for public's consumption, at least right now, in a preliminary way, we're planning on spending how much less money in our budget for '19 than we have revenue?
The forecast right now shows that we're going to be spending more than revenue, but remember...
And the reason, please, yeah.
Okay, so remember, the '19 revenue was reduced because we collected money early, and so, so that's just a little bit of shift. So that money, instead of in revenue, it's sitting in cash collected already.
And I'm, you know, I'm not a fiscal hawk, but I do remember when, in October, there was, when we had the narrative for the budget, or for the five-year forecast, there was a line that said, even if we pass all three renewals, we are still facing a deficit.
That's correct. So if I can just, can you put me back up?
In the deficit in fiscal year '21.
'21, yes, but so what we've done over the last few years, working hard to control our spending, is we pushed that deficit out a couple years.
Right.
It was in '19 originally, it was like in the very next operating year, and we've been able to delay that by managing our funds.
But, but I appreciated that sentence, because that sentence is very, very scary, that even if we're planning on passing three renewals, almost back-to-back-to-back, by fiscal year '21, we still have, we still have a deficit. The deficit's less in this report than it was in the October report.
Well, it, it's actually, it's looking a little bit higher right now than in October because of the phenomenon between tuition and transportation. Having said that, the forecasted expenditures tend to be higher than reality because of that inflationary climbing, so do you understand what I'm saying? So when we budget, if we don't spend all of, if we forecast what we budget and we don't spend all of our budget, then our future years are escalated at a higher rate than they need to be, but it's hard to predict that four and five years out. So while that shows a very ugly number, it'll be, the closer we get to those years, the better we will look, because of the way we manage our money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'm just still, you know, fixating on this sentence that says we're still faced, because I will tell you, if we have to go back to the voters three times for a renewal over four years, three times, we're not going to be getting new money in the near future after those three renewals.
Agreed.
So part of the budget piece in anticipation, and we're anticipating that revenue's going to be increasing in a number of ways, and things are, we're through a lot of dark period we've come through, and it's more positive. I'm just saying, it's, it's dangerous to keep planning on having budgets that are so significantly greater than the revenue that we're generating.
That's exactly right. So the point of the forecast is to say, if we continue to spend the rate of what we're spending, that we will hit a deficit faster, so it's our job to keep money in the cash account and not spend that money to make that money last longer. And so, you know, the reduction of federal funds has an impact on us. They've been decreasing about 7% per year.
This year, it's not projected to be as bad as everyone thought it was going to be, is my understanding.
Yes.
From National School Board, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And God knows what will happen with the state or any of that stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that one of the reasons, that's, that has to have some impact
Right.
on each of the budget years that we are facing.
Right.
Not that I want to make a balanced budget or what have you, you know, consistently, if it means we have to not serve our children. It's just that that kind of doomsday.
Right.
Then, then the five-year forecast needs to be as, either as negative as possible, which I think it usually is, or as positive or as real as it needs to be, because that impacts what we're willing to fund.
Right, and I tend to be pretty conservative in my estimates, so the, and that's why you hear me say a lot of time, if you want to add something new, you got to take something out. You can't spend more money without taking out, because we can't make more, sell more diapers or more cars, right? We don't have the opportunity to generate revenue that way. So we can't just keep adding things to the budget.
So, but when it's this FY '18, that we have all these good stuff on, we're just talking about the year previously.
I'm sorry, say that again.
This, these charts, FY '18?
The current year that we're in right now.
Of this year?
Yes.
It's not necessarily explaining yet, because we don't have a budget yet, totally.
Correct.
It's not explaining FY '19.
It's only, it's only explaining '19 to the best of our ability to forecast, not individual budget lines rolling up. So once we roll up the budget, we'll do that comparison and look for anomalies.
Okay, so it really is that this five-year forecast is an answer to the October version. The May version is really about October.
Yes.
This is not necessarily particularly informative about the FY '19.
Well, it is, because it's based on historical spend, but it's not about new spend or how decisions we may be about spending money differently.
And I, and this, again, just again, from my own knowledge, again, on the And I, and this, again, just again, from my own knowledge, again, on the pie chart where it shows so few dollars actually going to wages and personnel, and I think we always say because we outsourced transportation, how much of our personnel dollars, and I think you talk about it in the presentation, are actually put someplace else
Right.
in the pooling operation? Because I know this is an area where a lot of, when other school districts look at our information, they say, how are you not paying your staff? And really, we're, it's, they're in a different category.
So...
Not just about transportation.
Right. So when I combine the general fund forecast with the same, the amount of general fund that gets contributed into the transfer of the schoolwide pool, our salaries and benefits represent 50%, 57% of the spend, which is still less than other districts who pay their buses. They're more like 80%.
Absolutely. And it's a significant number. It's just as a, it is without that additional pie chart, it's, it's a, it causes confusion as to what we might need to be looking at.
Yeah, that was the ugly play chart that the white background didn't come out. This one, that's what shows that 57% of our salaries and benefits are of our total spend.
Total spend.
Right. And then tuition, transportation make up the majority of everything else.
I have others, but wait. Yes, our enrollment is increasing. Does the state share that's projected out take into account that trend? Or are you using the enrollment from the current year?
So the enrollment is increasing and the formula does show that, but because we're capped, we don't always get the benefit of the full growth.
When do we?
When, when we grow less than 5% of the previous year's revenues.
And when will that happen?
Well, we, all this year, we've bounced between the cap and the formula, the cap and the formula, depending on our data and the process in which we clean up our data and get it reported. So we're forecasted to stay in the cap. So we can only grow our revenues at 5% regardless of how many kids we bring in. The benefit, though, is if we bring kids in from community schools, that helps us better financially because you remember the phenomenon that they deduct about $7,400 per kid, but they only fund us at $3,400 per kid? That will bring more money into our pocket when we recruit charter school kids back or voucher kids. But the growth in enrollment, it makes it difficult because of the cap.
So are the charter kids counted in our enrollment?
Yeah, we have about 44,000 in our funded ADM. So that includes our students, charter school, and all the voucher children.
Okay, I don't think a lot of people know that because what, what's, when people, when people use simple math out in the community and they hear we have 35,000 kids, they divide it by our budget rather than our, than the 44,000, which really is more reflective.
Right, so what they also don't realize is we spend over $7 million transporting those children that we don't educate.
Right.
So that helps drive, and because they're citywide, there's no attendance boundaries at charter schools, it's really hard to be efficient routing. So they do a good job in combining routes with those schools, but, you know, the economies are difficult to manage. So, you know, we spend $50 million in charter school tuition, but another $3.5 million on transportation. And so that's part of that per pupil spend that the public doesn't understand, that's right. And so we present it on occasion when we have an opportunity to do so. And we can certainly add that to our budget presentation when we come out and
Yeah.
just keep reminding everybody.
Mr. Messer?
To the point of the general public not knowing that piece, I think there's a lot of this that the general public doesn't know. And I'd almost suggest we come up with a school funding 101 deck that we proactively take to community groups, specifically starting with community councils to help them understand this. Because it is complex and I think with your expertise and others, it could be simplified. But I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the importance of our discussion coming next year with abatements. Because while the abatements may not affect our total dollars, because those are fixed, correct? If you've taught me correctly.
Well, on the fixed, on the portion that's in the fixed sum levies, yes, but on the other ones, it does.
So on those fixed sum. But if abatements aren't giving to billionaires and property owners therefore have a smaller portion of their taxes paying that portion, they might be highly likely to say, I'll pay a little bit more new money because it could be a net-net for the average taxpayer, but we're meeting that deficit by really being strategic in educating people how this is done. So A, ensuring that the public understands the importance of this abatement conversation. And then B, if in fact, there is a time when we have to get to new money, which likely will happen, I mean, we have a great celebration because of the great work that people sitting right here do every day. More and more people are moving to our city. More and more people are choosing CPS. I hear that every day. People like, oh, I went out of Seven Hills, I went in CPS. How do I do that? Happened just recently. Those are great conversations. And I think we have to be ahead of the education and the community-wide understanding and perhaps come up with an initiative that can help the average Joe or Jill understand that. Thank you.
Sure. And I think doing a slide stack for community meetings is a great idea. I'm happy to do that.
Ms. Bolton, Danzby?
Well, I used to be that average Jill, I guess, only because I've been sitting here for a while. All this penetrated very quickly. So thank you for the amazing work, of course, to you and your team. I have a couple of questions and my colleagues have raised a lot of them. So knowing that our reimbursements aren't necessarily rising or cuts federally and that, there are a couple of things that I would like to point out that I think we can maybe, or I'm going to ask you how we are working to help control some of that spending. For an example, with the E-Rate and the Medicaid reimbursements, can you talk a little bit about that? Are they set formulas and that?
Yeah, so E-Rate is a reimbursement from the FCC and it's funds, it's on everybody's phone bill, it's a tax, that are to support technologies in schools and libraries. And it's a very regulated process. We typically use the money to do our telecom, phones and infrastructure. And so the refund is based on your free and reduced lunch rates and then the services that are qualified. And from time to time, they change. And those qualifications are declining. I don't know if Sarah's here? There you are. Okay, so sometime soon, typically they do it every year, they'll do an E-Rate presentation at Finance Committee
Yes.
and to talk about that. So that's that. But we get about $3 million a year, I believe, in E-Rate reimbursements. The Medicaid is usually two years behind and it's just a very difficult cumbersome process. And that's reimbursing us for services to students who qualify for Medicaid. In fact, we are in the process of doing a reimbursement from 13, I believe, or maybe it's 14 now. And so it's hard to predict when those monies are going to come in.
Yeah, and the reason I bring that up related to that Medicaid billing because I know personally how cumbersome it is. I bill it every day. And what I've come to realize, just in my own personal walk, is that there are often denials for many reasons and just a whole bunch of things where, you know, you're dealing with stuff for however many years behind. So I'm going to suggest a concentrated effort to maybe reconcile some of those things. Because I do know that there's a deadline or cutoff related to rebilling for some reimbursements that you may not have received. And I think that is a great area perhaps of opportunity. Also, as we talk about just controlling our spending, you've mentioned, you know, it's the administration's responsibility to control the spending because you know what your revenues are basically. And a way to offset that would be to reduce and lower, of course, your spending. So I wonder what checkpoints we have where we are managing, controlling the spending? Is it quarterly? Is it yearly or?
Actually, it's daily.
Okay.
So, so the board appropriates funds at the funds level, which allows us to spend money. The budget is organized by objective function. So a function is instruction versus support, administrative support. And objects are salaries and supplies and travel, blah, blah, blah. Okay? So the salaries are built up. You approve budget on June 30. We load the budget into the system and each individual budget owner has, when they requisition against that money, the money has to be there in order, the requisition won't move forward.
There you go.
And so we have, for example, I'll give you an example, like a school principal will put in a requisition. Well, it comes to the accounting department, number one, to ensure that it's a proper public purpose spend, it's appropriate for whatever funding source they're using, and is the money there and allocated. So then it gets encumbered aside so they can't keep spending the same pot of money. And so that's how we manage the spend. Another way to manage a spend is to very clearly identify a good, solid budget that supports our strategic initiatives. And the leadership team will attest to how difficult I could be in this process sometimes.
Good.
Because we used to have a phenomenon where they would copy the budget year after year after year. And one example of that is we used to budget $10 million for electricity. When I looked at a three-year average, we spent less than $8 million a year. And so I wouldn't let them budget for more than $8 million, right? And I know that makes them very nervous because they're afraid, well, if we have a really bad winter, then our electricity's going to go up. But, so those things you can kind of monitor and determine whether you need to add resources to. But if you over-budget, then you're taking money out of the classroom. I'd rather take that money and put it into students. So I tend to be a little challenging when we're doing that budget process, building process.
Good.
And everybody has to defend how they're supporting the strategic initiatives.
Very good, very good. And just two more things. A large part of our expenditures is our transportation contract. And being on the ground, we hear lots of concerns from families and challenges. Can you talk to us about plans moving forward related to ensuring that the dollars we're spending are getting what we need for our children and our families?
So my role in controlling that spend is to ensure that they're following the contract. Negotiating the contract is a little bit different and that's, the contracts are through... When are they up for renewal, Bill? Do you know? Mr. Moore? When are the transportation vendor contracts up for renewal?
No, all the transportation, the only thing that's up for renewal is fuel, like our...
So if you'll remember, a couple of years ago, instead of having the vendors buy their own gas, we can get it cheaper and we get a reimbursement on it. So we buy the gas for them. So that's the one, what Mr. Moore was talking about. So whenever they renegotiate is where you can identify savings. And then if you recall, two years ago, we brought the routers back in-house so that we can route more efficiently. We've increased the number of double routes, encouraged some of our private parochial schools to jump onto that bandwagon with us, although we're not completely there yet. We reduced the routes on metro to be on the main roads instead of all the little subroads to save monies there. And so those savings were able to compensate for some of the yellow bus increases and to pay for the seventh and eighth graders that jumped on the metro. So it takes a coordinated effort.
Good, yeah. And then, excuse me, my last comment would be to echo myself always in talking about messaging and just how we communicate this to the, to the public. And I specifically wrote down, related to our tuition for charters and parochials, as well as the huge cost for transporting folks to charters and parochials as well. And then I think to couple that with some of the other key factors like reduction in federal funds or anything else that folks may not know or understand doesn't afford us the highest revenue or income, you know, as possible. So I'd be happy to help with any suggestions related to that. I like what Mr. Messer said, just talking about, you know, putting together some sort of forum or something to help folks understand. But then, along with our transparency, we'll be reporting on these things as well.
Yes, yeah. So Brittany's worked hard at adding things to the Open Gov
Yes.
website. She's putting, she's going to put the forecast on there. And, you know, every opportunity I get to speak in public, I usually talk about these things.
Yep.
And, but it would help if to have an army of people saying the same message. So we can work on that.
We'd be happy with, I think we'd be happy with reporting any messaging that we can also take to the community. So as always, wonderful work. This is very complicated and I appreciate the amazing job that you guys do.
Just, Ms. Bolton, did you have another comment?
Just real quickly, and could you explain the backside of this sheet for me? Meaning it starts with reservation, reservation of fund balance and the revenue from replacement renewal levies and revenue.
Right.
I'm just, and I'm trying to compare it to the October one, which I probably don't need to do, but could you tell us what those, what those are about? I think it's 10, 11, and 13 or whatever.
So the top line on that, 7.02, is the cash balance at the beginning of the year. And then, or the, I'm sorry, the cash balance that we're going to end the year with. And then the estimated encumbrances, every year, we have a bunch of purchase orders out there that are open, waiting for invoices to come in.
And there's been a great improvement over your term of office
Yes, we work hard.
into 12 million or 13 million.
We have room to grow, but we're working hard. So then the blue, the first blue line, 10.01, is the unencumbered fund balance. So what that says is if you start with cash and you pay out all those open encumbrances, that's how much cash you'll have left at the end of the year. So in fiscal year 18, if we paid all $13 million of open encumbrances, we would end up with 87 million. So the other question you asked me about was the renewal levies.
Help me out with the 87 million?
Okay, so on line 10.01, it says 87 million. So the top line says we're going to end the year with an estimated $100 million in cash. If I have that cash, I need, I've already encumbered, I've already committed the funds, 13 million. That's just kind of a set aside. 87 will be what's left over. So on the renewals, this is a state formula, I mean, a state format. So we're required on a renewal, you can't use that as estimate on your top revenues. They make you put it down here on the bottom, back here. So you can add it to your cash balance. And so that first year in 2021, it's a half year because remember, we're on a fiscal year, taxes are on a calendar year. So that first year, we would lose, if we did not pass that levy, we would lose a half year's worth of funds, 33 million. And then the next year, it's cumulative because if you get it, it gets into your cash balance. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then again, comparing to October and, and May, the, the October one, at the very last number, down at 15, 0, yeah, 010, it was a deficit of 105 million or so?
Yes, and now it's 136. That's because of the growth in tuition and the growth in transportation that's forecasted.
So if we're looking at things, that's an area where we have to make serious strides, obviously, if that's going to take us to a deficit.
Yes, or reduce other spending.
Because actually, the numbers are much more positive. I mean, we're in a relatively good place as school districts go, let alone Urvans financially. I mean, that's what was my thinking, but this five-year forecast is making me rethink some of the things I was thinking about the budget. Because this is actually worse than the October one
In the future.
into the future.
Correct.
But that's why I don't understand why it's worse into the future if what we're in the present is actually better. I mean, so I know it's a matter of projections and it's
Right.
it's, and I don't want it necessarily, well, it has to, inform my thoughts about the budget.
So it's better in the current year because we collected money early that we should have not, we wouldn't have collected next year. So it makes next year look a little bit more difficult.
Right. And a lot of bad things haven't happened that we were really concerned about, and some bad things have, but...
Right. So the, if the tuition, if the foster place issue continues to grow at the rate it's growing at 32% growth per year, we will, and that's a new, that's a new phenomena that we just realized this year, this May, we're doing through the October. As we're going through our budget to actual spend every month, I'm seeing transportation is squeezing up against its total budget, I mean, sorry, tuition. And so we start analyzing it. And I've asked Dr. Jamison and Valerie Walker to do a presentation for Finance Committee on this phenomenon. We're also attracting much more families to the city of Cincinnati because of the success that Children's Hospitals had with their autism and the school district's reputation on educating those students. So we're adding more units to the schools. So we're adding more units to the schools. So there is room for improvement in the forecast based on the way we did our salaries and our expansion. And so I think the future years will look better when we come back in October with a better way to do that. And it'll also give us more time to figure out what's happening with transportation and tuition in the future.
And then my last, just to that point, the, the better stuff that's happening to the front of this, I would like to see it be more reflected at the end of it, if possible, because it's going to, it's going to color how I'm thinking about the budget. But the, but the other piece is if the administration, if they, if you could, both for our legislative folks and for our own knowledge, we need to know those things that are happening in the budget that are, are crippling us. And they, and they really are. And, and we have to figure those things out, because those are the places where we have to, and we can't just add. We have to, as you mentioned, we have to cut certain things.
Correct.
But it would be more helpful, it would be helpful to this board member, anyway, to kind of have a caution light on some of these issues. We know about the transportation, and we know that we're willing to do much of that. But this foster thing and a few others, and the cost of special ed and all these important services that we're rendering, I need to know more about where we need to be concerned. Because it actually, making sure you all have money to do everything you all are doing, that's the only, the only seven people in the country that are responsible for that are us. And maybe your budget, but we're the ones by law have to make sure there's money.
Well, as things get added to our responsibility, such as increasing transportation that we didn't used to have to transport, or paying for tuition that we didn't used to have to pay for, it reduces our ability to fund the controllable things, and investments, strategic investments. So, yes, you're right.
And then just, will, will there be a narrative for this one, as there was for October?
Yes.
Rather than just the chart?
The notes are in...
To see how the narrative changes as well?
Yes, the notes are in draft form, and they will be ready for Monday night.
Thank you.
Or Monday day.
Friday packet.
So I am one of those people who always benefits from a school funding 101. And I appreciate, Ms. Wagner, that you've always been available to help me better understand. I understand things conceptually, but in some of the details. So I appreciate that. But one of the things I heard you say, we lose money in some areas. And I think, for example, you were talking about charter kids who come back. Say, the $7,000, of that $7,000 cost, we only get about $3,000. So we lose money there. Also, Ms. Copeland-Dansby referred to Medicaid, and I believe Medicaid has a formula as well. So I, I'm curious to know, what is it, 60, 40 for the service? They don't pay a lot of times for the entire, what the service is worth, right? And then we lose money there.
I can't answer that specific of a question. I don't know if Ms. Bunty can help out, or I can come back with more information on Medicaid.
All right. So I had mentioned to you earlier, last board meeting, we agreed to compile our inquiries and questions and comments and all that. And that is ready, except we want to make some final revisions and edits to it. That will be ready tomorrow. We'll make sure that board members get copy, copies, and you and superintendent get copies of that. And I was pleasantly surprised that it was similar to what I've heard today, that people had more questions than requests for adding things. There is some of that, but looking at it, I'm, I'm almost sure, well, I have some fair certainty, that some of the requests are already budgeted somewhere within the strategic initiative. So I'll make sure everybody gets that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll move on to our Board Matters agenda item. Mr. Messer, this is your topic.
Yes. Thank you for adding this to Board Matters. As all of you know, we have an exciting birthday to celebrate. Is it next month, I think? And that was kind of the rollout of preschool expansion in the city of Cincinnati. And creating opportunities for more children to have the same access to quality education, no matter what neighborhood or zip code or home they live in. And I think that's a really exciting thing. As one of the liaisons to partner with our preschool Promise partners, I had the opportunity to sit down with Shiloh, who is their new executive director, as everyone knows. And I couldn't be more impressed with her. Just an authentic, passionate person that I felt nothing other than an excitement to partner with CPS. And if I may say, she couldn't have been more complimentary to her partners that she works with each and every day here as part of our administration. And I just want to say thank you to our team members who are showing up as best-in-class partners to them. In that discussion, we had a couple of ideas that I wanted to make sure I brought back to the whole board for consideration. One was, I think we need to celebrate the work that has been done by those people who are at the table from CPS, and, you know, Cheryl, and others who have just gone above and beyond on behalf of so many incredibly lucky children. And then all the people on the preschool Promise staff. And, you know, I think one idea was for us to schedule a time, similar to ACEs, but almost to have a joint meeting at some point after the one-year anniversary, to do a reflection and maybe a quick SWOT analysis exercise. Because I think it's what our taxpayers would want us to do, and ensuring that we are living into the promise that was made by the votes that were cast overwhelmingly to support this. The second idea we had was, we don't do enough recognition sometimes for the people who are doing the work. And one idea was to bring together our team and the preschool Promise team for a thank you reception, just purely to, to thank. And it would be our board and the preschool Promise board together, just thanking them for their efforts over the past year, doing a little of recognition and celebration for the work. And then, you know, I think there, in addition to CPS, there are a lot of community partners out there who, it has been a transition, I think, in just what I've tried to piece together as a brand-new board member, and trying to figure out, how do I fit and how do I partner? And what are the metrics that I have to work on? And who do I work on? And am, am I in competition with somebody? And, you know, I, I look at it at the very root, that those community partners are doing us a great service. And that is to prepare children who enter our doors in kindergarten at a level that is greater than children who don't have that opportunity. And I think we need to make sure they know how much we value the work that they do to prepare our children, just like we do in our preschools. And so the third recommendation was to do just a thank you reception. And maybe it's here in this room, maybe it's somewhere else. And, you know, just, just again, to say thank you and further reinforce the, the collaboration, bridge-building, et cetera, that is what I believe we owe to the people who have made this funding possible. So those are my three recommendations.
Board members have questions or comments or add to Mr. Messer's suggestions? Ms. Bolton?
I'm always happy to celebrate, have a party. And I think that'd be great. I, I do think that we're in a good place right now compared to the long four-year effort to get here. So the degree to which we can keep moving forward, instead of necessarily rehash or pay for territory twice, which is never a good thing to have to do. I think that would be fine, as long as it's futuristic. I, I do, and I will say it always, I think the partnership is great. We all agreed to the partnership because we knew that our families needed as many choices as possible. And that, you know, that perhaps we alone could not do it any more than the community people could do it alone. I, I always do say, though, that I want to maintain the identity of the Cincinnati Public School preschool effort. And I think that that's that, I think that it's not a partnership if we're not recognizing that there's this big public entity, and then there's this wonderful community entity. So I, I think that if we can celebrate the partnership, I think that would be great. I also have to say, there are some preschool issues that we need to deal with. And part of it is space. And I know it's an issue we can't deal with very effectively. And that is, the very children that may need the preschool the most cannot get to the schools because of transportation. Many families can find a grandma or a neighborhood person, or a part of an extended family to do the drop-off and pickup, or whatever. But I, we talk about transportation dollars. I know we can never afford to do this, but somebody's going to have to rise to the occasion, and it can't be us, about creating some kind of industry to get the little ones to and from. Plus, we have to continue to decentralize the preschool, so they are as close to people as possible, especially the people that can't do the transportation piece. But yes, I, I heard just yesterday that our littlest one, who was in preschool last year, got to see her preschool teacher, Mrs. Hunsberger, at school, because she was visiting the school. And it was, it made her month. So the, just, we need to celebrate, frankly, I think, all the people that are, are teaching the little people and serving them too, as paraprofessionals and, and aides in every way possible. So it's been, that's been a great success. We, we do it the best.
Ms. Bates?
Yes, and kind of back to Ms. Bolton's point about, you know, access for families that have other commitments, can't get to the, can't pick up at certain times because they're at work or whatever. We are also in the process of talking to Cincinnati Recreation Commission and piloting a program there where we would provide preschool. Well, preschool, the reason I pick up my grandson is because it ends at two. And there isn't a program at that school that takes the children to the time the parents get off school. And, and we have that issue in Cincinnati Public Schools and many of our schools. But partnering with the Y is helpful. Partnering with Cincinnati Recreation Commission, either using their personnel on our, in our schools, or using the recreation centers for our services, and then combine them with the extended-day services, needs to be pursued now that we kind of, we kind of have the expansion not taken care of, but in pro, in progress. Connecting the services, I think, is the next big, important step that we need to take. And, and we're starting discussions. But we really need to follow through to make sure that those are, those connections are made, so that our families can send their children and the families that don't have the resources, you know? And, and many of our centers and schools are neighborhood-centered, so many families can walk. You know, most people can get to recreation centers. So anyway, that's, the next steps are very, very important.
Raise, use your hand up.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
So thank you, Mr. Messer, for bringing to our attention the need to have a party. I think we should. I think that the partnership is something definitely to be celebrated. I love the idea of acknowledging the work that's been done over the past year, though there are still many gaps in service that need to be addressed. The, the issue about barriers, transportation, access, finding a qualified location close to home or close to work or what have you, full day, all day, year-round care is extremely important to a lot of our families. So those are issues that I will be continuing to bring to the forefront as a committee member of the preschool Promise CPS partnership, what have you. Partnering with other resources is amazing. And I think we should call to task, you know, Metro related to that. Because whereas we might not be able to provide transportation to families and little ones to get where they need to, bus tokens and bus cards and those kinds of things were, you know, amazing. And then I also have questions about summer care for preschool. Like what does your grandson do for summer care? You know, because a lot of people still have to go to work. You know what I mean? So I would be happy to support having a party. I think, and coupled with that, and maybe we could save this for assignments, but to have our administration, along with preschool Promise, put together some communication tool with some messaging that talks about the great work that has been done over the past year. And then that become a, a big part of the celebration and, you know, really covering what those success points are.
I, I want to add to Mr. Messer. I, I certainly would love to celebrate. And I, I have to say this, in, in all honesty, that we all recognize that there are still issues with, and, and challenges that we need to address with the partnership. But I would hope that we don't let the challenges, we have to address them, but we don't want the challenges to overshadow this wonderful recommendation to celebrate what we've accomplished thus far. And I think Mrs. Broadnax, because I've just chatted with her about a few things, has, could really, when we make the assignments, I think she already probably has some ideas because she's been meeting on, ongoing with Shiloh. And who, yes, she is a, a good person, and I think that she's working hard to, from their end, to make the partnership work. And just to inform, in case board members didn't know, they have, the partnership strategic meeting has been temporarily suspended, or am I correct?
Yeah. The good news is, most of the topics that you've already listed are things that are already discussed.
Yes.
The forefront. So we looked at reconvening, but more or less, we began to update you on some of these, these topics.
Okay.
Already they've discussed.
Okay. And what's also being discussed, was also discussed as part of our board retreat, retreat agenda for preschool Promise, and have been added to our priority list. So that's another, another topic that I'll update in the inquiries and updates section. But then, another challenge is that I too am also on that partnership committee, and as I understand, we can't have three people. So we need to resolve that too fairly soon, once we, once we, once the partnership convenes. We need to resolve that. Okay. So we, it sounds like we're going to have some assignments come out of this. Okay, thanks. All right. Does anyone have any kudos?
I do.
I have one.
Yes.
I have a giant kudo today. I would like to say happy anniversary to our superintendent, who's celebrating one year in her role. It popped up as a reminder to me, because this time last year, we were just getting her seated and just getting started. I'm sure it's been an amazing year, and so happy anniversary to you.
Ms. Bolton? I have one, that Ms. Davis made sure I, I saw and I appreciated it. The winners of the annual Nursing Excellence Awards presented by Interact, Interact for Change and the Deaconess Association's Foundation were recognized May 7th in a ceremony at Interact for Health. Ann McCracken, former director of the Evaluation of Interact for Health, received the award for leadership. But this one, get this one, Meg Schroeder, nurse at Cincinnati Public Schools Taft Information Technology High School, received the award for clinical practice and excellence in one of our school-based health centers.
Thank you. Other kudos?
I, I think the superintendent might have one. As an alum of a particular school.
Great job.
Through what you're talking about.
I think they were going to try to reach you, that they, I guess, SCPA, we'll all be happy about this, has this, by the...
be happy about this, has, by the arts folks, has been awarded and announced as a school, exemplar school in the arts. So that's really cool. So congratulations, alum.
Congratulations to the staff. They have done phenomenal work over the last several years, so.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I wanted to give kudos, actually, to Julie Sellers, who's part of the CPS family, who was recognized as one of the only people from this country to present and lead a session at an international educational forum in South Africa. And so it's great to have somebody, not just from the state, but right here from our district as one of the few who were selected to present there. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then I was also made aware of Kelly Bagioko, who was elected to the board of her community council. And I think this is big because, you know, yes, the work is here, but the work is also there, and she's now going to be reaching out to a whole community where she's in leadership that they're going to see that she cares about community as much as she cares about the children. And frankly, to help make sure that our children have a voice, if I know her and what I've seen so far, that her voice have a seat at that table of that community council. And I think we need to celebrate when our leaders take that extra step to also be leaders in their community.
Thank you. All deserving kudos. Okay, Mrs. Bates, retirements?
Yes, we have several retirements to announce from our civil service personnel, Christine Davis Elder, Lawrence J. Dittman, Peggy Maloney, Angela K. Sandage, Kathy A. Smart, and Lily M. Thompson. We would like to congratulate you on your retirement and thank you for your service to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. And we have two speakers today, so I'm going to call both of them, Marlena Brookfield and John Healy.
Today, I am really thrilled to give some kudos myself, so that was a great segue. Today is the final meeting of Dader High School's LGBTQIA Alliance, True Colors, I need to be taller for this, which was started last school year, 2017, and it has been my privilege to work with a group of students who are so passionate about being advocates for themselves and allies. They do so much great work, and I also want to thank Ms. Venkata Krishnan for being the teacher sponsor. They're great people to work with, and this year has just been amazing to see them grow and change and learn. So thank you, sharing that with you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
Hi, thank you very much. I'm from Upincheviat, and I want to talk about the upcoming opening on your board. I'd like to recommend that Renee Havia be put at the top of your shortlist because of the voters. You know, she was on the bubble for me, I voted for her, but there are other people I really liked a lot who didn't make it. And, but that's up me and not the voters. The voters very closely chose someone else, but she was within a couple hundred votes, and therefore I think she's someone you should consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. So always want to highlight the outstanding work of our students as well as our staff. So I'd like to make the board and the public aware that there was a Student Enterprise event, which is an outgrowth of Vision 2021.0 for our Westwood and Rothenberg students. They actually had a pop-up shop here at the education center, I believe it was on Monday. They were, in addition, able to host Maya Penn, who is a young woman, she is 18 now, who started her first business at the age of eight. And so, again, we always want to put in front of our kids people who look like them doing the things that they want to do, and so she's a great role model for them. She did have the opportunity to give them some feedback on some products that they're interested in launching, and so they had a little Shark Tank exhibit, and she also gave some prizes out to them. So really, good information and good news for our kids who are continuing that work. In addition, on the HR side, in thinking about being more up-to-date and more friendly in terms of recruitment, this year, HR did host a day in the life of where prospective teachers were able to spend a day in either one of our elementary schools or our high schools. And so I want to thank Lisa Votah for welcoming people into her school as the high school, and then Angel Roddy for welcoming people into Mount Airy. And so Julia Indalatio was the person who spearheaded that project. So thanks to those people. I do have a short video clip, the Moore video clip of our young men who are going off to Miami next year on a full ride for the next four years. So we're very excited about this, and wanted to bring those young people in front of you in the form of a video. Thank you.
...this fall with full scholarships, thanks to a newly formed partnership between Cincinnati Public Schools and University.
Scholarship. Why, that's a great idea.
I know.
We're talking about, get this, over a half a million dollars in scholarships.
Frankie Jupiter was at signing day, it has their story.
I'm excited, I'm grateful.
Tyrone Little, Elijah Williams, Ryan Brewster, Tyree Israel, and Mustafa Juma have a lot to be grateful for. Through the Moore Program, which is short for Men Organized, Respectful, and Educated, these five young men will continue their education in the fall at Miami University.
Ever since I can remember, I aspire to be great, and the Moore Program kind of molded me and put me in the right path that I need to go to accomplish my dreams, accomplish my goals.
Tyree Israel will soon be graduating from Gamble Montessori and plans to study finance. In total, for the five students, $560,000 worth of tuition, room and board, and books will be funded by the university. The Moore Program was started to support African-American male students from fourth to 12th grades. The program covers a variety of topics, including college and career awareness. Tyrone Little will be graduating from Schroeder High School and plans to study strategic communications.
I'm looking forward to making a change. I want to show them that people from our color, our generation, that we are, we have good people. It's not just our streets and our violence and stuff like that that they see on social media.
Tyrone's parents are proud of his hard work and perseverance.
This is an opportunity that is once in a lifetime, and I really think he worked hard enough and deserved it, you know. Me personally, it would have been a struggle trying to put him through school. It would have got done, but it would have been a big, a hard struggle.
With that pressure aside, his parents, along with others, will watch as their children embark on their college journey. Tyrone has advice for those seeking to take the college route.
You're not alone. Don't think that you're alone at any point in time, that you have to have ambition, you have to have patience too, because everything's not going to come in one day. It's not going to happen overnight. You have to work hard for it and be patient, and it will come.
Reporting from Mount Arben, Frankie Jupiter, Fox 19 Now.
So we couldn't be happier for those young men. We are so excited, it almost brings tears to my eyes to think about the possibility. This is only the beginning and only the start with our partnerships with the university. Those young men who are going off to school, it's a great start, but it's not nearly enough. And so we're going to be working very hard, quite honestly, and fighting very hard to make sure more of our kids have those opportunities. Just really want to highlight the work of the curriculum department. Since the inception of this idea at the beginning of the school year, Tiana Martin-Her team worked extremely hard to make sure that those young men are set up for success. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I just, I'm so proud, and I saw that story when it aired, and then there were a couple other bits that were on social media. And I just remember, you know, the beginning of those conversations about those partnerships. And if you think back to the ACT boot camp several years ago with Miami, and so that's how you make relationships and use our resources. And I just, I'm so impressed and just grateful for those families. I also want to point out the optics of that whole celebration that was in this room, that just looked amazing. Ms. Worley was probably responsible for that. And just how we are progressing with how we're doing business, how we're interacting with the public and that. So that's just like amazing stuff. Thank you for sharing.
Our more, but I have a question.
Please.
One doesn't look like an athletic.
It did, it did.
So Miami has all that, so big kudos to William and the entire.
Yeah, it was noticeable. It was great. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Okay, inquiries or updates? I have a couple. Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Inquiry, just inquiring and see if the superintendent can report back to us, at least me or whatever, regarding, again, summer school, summer learning, seventh and eighth grade, credit recovery, social studies, as well as the other academics. It doesn't have to be today, but it can be any time that is available. But I'm curious and concerned about the social studies and also the air stuff, about how many points they have to get between science and social studies, we've spoken. So just an update would be great.
Okay. So our two assistant superintendents, Mrs. Broadnax and Mr. Miles, worked on and developed a comprehensive summer school plan. We are more than happy to provide you with that plan. It does include literacy at the elementary schools, seventh and eighth grade, summer school, in addition to and different than summer bridge, in addition to high school summer school in terms of those students who still need to secure points on their end-of-course exams. And then also, I had a conversation with Mr. Miles about including science, specifically biology and social studies at the high school level. But we are more than happy to provide you with a memo, along with the documentation of the summer school plan.
Well, I don't need any more documentation. You're saying that we'll do biology and social studies, the American government, American history?
I love Ms. Bolton, she makes us say it on, on mic.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the attention to that.
Other inquiries or updates before I give mine to? Okay, you all probably sick of me hearing it, but reminder of ACES meeting, June 5th, 5:00 to 6:30. It is city council's turn to facilitate, it'll be here in this auditorium. And we're working on the agenda, which you all have submitted your agenda items, and I'm working with Alita Kaymine to prioritize those. Just a reminder. And then secondly, another reminder, and we talked about it a lot today, was around our board retreat. As you know, we missed the scheduled one, April 4th. And if we want to complete this work, we have to decide. I was initially going to say sometime in May, but as our schedules are already jam-packed and people are going to be out of town, so we can't do it. But I would, I hate to leave that work undone because it's so important. Those priorities will impact, may impact, I should say, the budget forecast, I, you know. So I'm just asking for any ideas of how you all want to handle that. Ms. Bolton?
Just a clarification, those eight or so priorities that we developed at the January meeting. I think both the superintendent and the treasurer have received those lists as to work into their schedule. I know that, I think treasurer's presented it to finance, I think I saw that in your summary or something, and I know the superintendent received it in student achievement. So we know that they're working on those eight priorities. To me, the only thing that I need to think about is how are we going to evaluate ourselves?
That's exactly what the intent is.
On those. So I think if we can do that, I think that's the kind of thing that we not take a long, long time, as long as we know they're working forward on those very important. So I think maybe a discussion just during a regular meeting rather than additional time, what are your thoughts?
Well, we can, my, I don't have a particular preference, I just want to get the work done.
Yeah.
And, and we started them, there are a few that haven't been addressed at all, and there are some, a couple that just probably need board reaction, board final comments. So I don't know if a meeting, if we can do it in a meeting, we would probably need a full meeting under board matters to do it, and it may take an hour, hour and a half, I would think.
I would just follow up on that. I think it'd be great for the public to see what our priorities were six months after we, you know, established them, knowing they're working on it, and then us trying, them seeing that we're, how we're trying to evaluate. Because some of that stuff that was done was a timeline that is already gone. It was like what to do in the first six months.
Right.
Well, that's been happening. So I think it'd be great to have an open discussion about those priorities.
Okay. I will make sure that everybody gets what's already been done, and you can, we can get it scheduled over the next probably two or three meetings. That would work for me.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Messer?
So I'm kind of assigning this, maybe, I don't want anybody to plan their own party, so I'm happy to take some responsibility for helping to plan this. And my guess is Phyllis and Pat would also help coordinate organizing that, so those who are being celebrated aren't doing work. But I would like to ask for the support of our expert, Lauren, in helping to make that a true celebration. I think it's media-worthy, I think there are great stories to tell, talking points that could be baked into that, so I think there's some partnership there and pulling.
Can I add, Ms. Broadnax, if you need to include her in?
Yeah, absolutely, but we're, but we're going to celebrate her.
Yeah. Okay.
She's going to be queen for a day, and, you know, we're going to do some celebrating there. And then, as far as that joint meeting, you know, when we, we could take a breather, so maybe it's past June, but I think it would be great if this board could sit down with the Preschool Promise Board and say, you know, what are those identified gaps? What is our plan going to be to start to address that, and what's the work, and who's going to be doing what, and help make sure that, you know, we're not duplicating work, but we are focusing efforts on the things that I took notes of that we shared here that really should be addressed sooner than later.
Okay. I have a question. When is the next committee meeting, Preschool Promise Committee meeting? Do we know, Ms. Davis? Okay. So we need to figure out when that is.
The board, I want to say?
Of this, of May?
Their next board, their next board meeting.
When is the joint committee? The committee that they suspended it?
But that's the one that's suspended.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Okay.
We need, like, the implementation.
For the implementation team, that, I guess that's what I'm looking for. So then their board meets the 24th, so, okay. Can I, not hijack your plan, but to just add to your plan, as you said, to make this a really big deal, and some wonderful, fun hoopla around the partnership. I just wrote down communication and a big deal around preschool celebration. So.
Thank you. Any other assignments?
I love throwing a party, so.
I'm sorry?
I love throwing a party, so I'm all in.
Ms. Bolton?
So it's made in public, assigned to the administration, the effort regarding pedestrian safety issues and addressing it with the various sub-issues within that to the city, and also for the administration to review some of the work that we've been doing or we're supposed to be doing and have done over the last several years regarding pedestrian safety.
Hearing no other business befores, I declare the meeting adjourned. Hearing no other business befores, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Erica, I've been remiss in not getting back to you about those June dates.
Yes.
This June, Ryan reminded me that June 5th is an ACES meeting.
It is, now that you mention it.
Yeah, I had forgotten totally. I mean, we could do, we could do a 4 o'clock and be done by the 5 o'clock, since it's here, but also June 12th. That's still a possibility for you.
Yep, I have a 2 o'clock finance meeting. And that, other than that, I'm clear.
Okay.
4 o'clock?
So, 4 o'clock?
I'm going to put it here.
June 12th. Phyllis, June 12th, 4 o'clock will be the...
I know she's like, don't tell me while I'm doing this. I'll never remember. You look really nice today. Oh, no, I didn't know. That's a good thing because I got to go to work.